Hey, you're now live.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the special call meeting of the Kattaw City Council on Thursday, September the 17th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Notice of this meeting has been sent out pursuant to the Kentucky Open Meetings Act and is being conducted by Zoom video teleconference and is being livestreamed to YouTube and our public. For members to participate in the meeting, your video must be turned on. Members must be seen and heard. We will get started with a roll call vote to record attendees. Savannah, would you call the roll, please?
Kim?
Here.
Skylar?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Not present is Sean and Kenny.
Okay, so we have our quorum established. I'll call the meeting to order. Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we give thanks to you for your many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance so we can make the best decisions for our city and community. We pray for strength and healing from this current virus. We ask our prayers go out to those who have been in the paths of the wildfires in California and the hurricanes. Help us to do your will. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, our first item on the agenda, we have a couple of old business things we need to take care of. The first would be the second reading of the City of Kattaw Ordinance Number 09-14-20-08, which is the ordinance establishing the watercraft tax rate. Is there a motion to hear the reading?
I make a motion that we hear the reading of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We need a roll call vote.
Okay, Kim?
Aye.
Skylar?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Vote carries. Jay, could you read, please?
Yes, ma'am. City of Kattaw, Kentucky, ordinance number 09-14-20-08, an ordinance repealing City of Kattaw ordinance number 08-12-19-06, and establishing the property tax rate on watercraft. Whereas the City of Kattaw, Kentucky is desirous of establishing a watercraft tax rate for county year 2020, and whereas the City of Kattaw, Kentucky deems that 22 cents per $100 of assessed value is necessary and sufficient. Now therefore be it ordained that the watercraft property tax rate for county year 2020 is 22 cents per $100 of assessed value. This ordinance shall become effective upon passage and publication. First reading, September 14th, 2020. Second reading, September 17th, 2020. Consideration, September 17th, 2020. Passage, publication, attests Savannah McLeod, City Clerk, City of Kattaw, Kentucky, Barbara Campbell, Mayor, City of Kattaw, Kentucky.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Is there any discussion?
Just a point of order. It's the same tax rate as was the preceding year, correct?
It will forever and always since 1903.
That we know of. We think that. We think so. I was two years old in 1983, but we think that's... Sorry.
You had to rub that in, didn't you?
Sorry.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the reading of the ordinance?
Make a motion to accept the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. We need a roll call, please.
Kim?
Aye.
Skylar?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
As have it, the carries, the ordinance number 09-14-20-08 has been adopted. The next item in our business, we have the second reading of the City of Kattaw Ordinance Number 09-14-20-10, ordinance establishing procedure for grant applications for the City of Kattaw. Is there a motion to hear the reading of the ordinance?
I make a motion that we hear the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. We need a roll call vote, please.
Kim?
Aye.
Skylar?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it. Jay, could you read the ordinance, please?
Yes, ma'am. City of Kattaw, Kentucky, ordinance number 09-14-20-10, an ordinance establishing policies and procedures for the consideration and approval of grant applications submitted to the City of Kattaw. Whereas the City of Kattaw desires to establish policies and procedures for the consideration and approval of grant applications submitted to the City of Kattaw, and whereas in an effort to accomplish this objective, the City of Kattaw desires to adopt the ordinance establishing the policies and procedures for the consideration and approval of grant applications submitted to the City of Kattaw, and whereas upon the adoption of this ordinance, policies and procedures for the consideration and approval of grant applications submitted to the City of Kattaw will be implemented in Chapter 33 of the Kattaw City ordinances. Now therefore be it ordained and established by the City of Kattaw as follows. The City of Kattaw hereby accepts the recommendation of the Kattaw City Council to adopt policies and procedures for the consideration and approval of grant applications submitted to the City of Kattaw in Chapter 33 of the Kattaw City ordinances, which are collectively attached here to as Exhibit A, and which are fully incorporated herein by reference. These new policies and procedures for the consideration and approval of grant applications submitted to the City of Kattaw will repeat the place of any prior policies and procedures for the consideration and approval of grant applications approved by the City of Kattaw. First reading, September 14th, 2020. Second reading, September 17th, 2020. Consideration, September 17th, 2020. Passage, publication, Barbara Campbell, Mayor, City of Kattaw, Kentucky, attests Savannah McLeod, City Clerk, City of Kattaw, Kentucky. Exhibit A, Grant Application and Approval, Section A, no funding request from any organization or entity may be considered unless and until a full, accurate, and complete grant funding application is filed with the City of Kattaw. Section B, no funding request will be considered from any non-pro... excuse me, no funding request will be considered from any for-profit organization or entity unless otherwise permissible under state law. Likewise, no funding request will be considered if the City of Kattaw is prohibited by state law from sending money for the requested good or service. Section C, once a full and complete application from a nonprofit group or organization where a legal expenditure of city funds is received by the City of Kattaw, the members of the Kattaw City Council will be given a full copy of the application prior to the next rarely scheduled Kattaw City Council meeting. Determination, Section A, the City of... excuse me, the Kattaw City Council may only approve a grant application which first meets the following test of public purpose. Number one, the expenditure must confer a direct benefit of reasonably general character to a significant part of the city public as distinguished from a remote or theoretical benefit. Number two, the receiving organization must provide services that are for the general good and welfare of the citizens. And number three, the grant must have as its objective the promotion of the public health, safety, morals, general welfare, security, prosperity, and commitment of all, or at least a substantial part of city inhabitants or residents. Section B, the Kattaw City Council must further make a determination that there are adequate safeguards in place to make sure that the receiving organization uses the grant request for the particular public purpose found by the City of Kattaw. Where possible, the City of Kattaw should be provided notices, excuse me, should be provided invoices or application of the grant funds directly to the vendor of the material, equipment, goods, or services which are being provided to the public. C, the Kattaw City Council may only approve a grant application through the adoption of a municipal order at a regular monthly meeting of the Kattaw City Council. Prohibited grants, Section A, the City of Kattaw hereby find that the following type of grant requests are not sufficiently related to a public purpose and are therefore prohibited. Number one, any grant request which could be construed as payment of a personal bill for a city resident as opposed to the support of a community-wide program or initiative. Number two, any grant request which could be construed as support of a particular business or industry. And number three, any grant request which funds any facility that is not open to the general public. Penalty, Section A, any person violating any provision of this chapter for which no specific penalty is prescribed shall be subject to Section 1099 of this Code of Ordinances. Section B, any person who violates any provision of Section 3304 shall be fined not less than $50 nor more than $500. In addition, any officer who fails to comply with any of the provisions of Section 3304 shall, for each failure, be subject to a forfeiture of not less than $50 nor more than $500 in the discretion of the court, which may be recovered only once in civil action brought by any resident of the city.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Is there any discussion? If not, is there a motion to accept the ordinance? Number 09-14-20-10.
Make a mo... Go ahead, Kim. Skylar.
I make a motion to accept the ordinance as read.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. We need a roll call vote, please.
Kim?
Aye.
Skylar?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. The ordinance number 09-14-20-10 is hereby adopted. Moving along to our new business. First item would be the Resolution Number 11, a resolution designating September 2020 as City Government Month. Okay, could you read the resolution, please?
Yes. City of Kattaw, Kentucky, Resolution Number 11, a resolution designated in September 2020 a City Government Month in the City of Kattaw. Whereas civics education in Kentucky schools is important to ensure future generations are engaged and involved in their local community and its governance, and whereas elementary schools are a prime location for the introduction of local government principles and responsibilities, and whereas involving and informing students of local government programs and duties can provide an opportunity for entire families to connect with vital city services and programs, and whereas there are 416 cities in Kentucky and 55% of the state's population lives in a city, and whereas City Government Month is a civics awareness campaign that educates elementary school students about city services by providing teachers lesson plans, a coloring slash activity book, and an implementation guide, and whereas the KLC Board of Directors has declared September 2020 a City Government Month in Kentucky. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Kattaw, Kentucky does hereby designate September 2020 as City Government Month in the City of Kattaw. Be it further resolved that city officials and employees are encouraged to collaborate with local elementary schools to educate students about their city government and to engage them in city services. Barbara Campbell, Mayor, City of Kattaw, Kentucky, attests Savannah McLeod, Kattaw City Clerk, introduced by the Council, September 17th, 2020, adopted by the Council, 2020. Certification, I, the undersigned, do hereby certify that I am the duly qualified and acting City Clerk of the City of Kattaw, Kentucky, and as the City Clerk of the City of Kattaw, Kentucky, I further certify that the foregoing is a true and correct copy, true, correct, and complete copy of a resolution duly adopted by the City Council, signed by the Mayor and now in full force and effect. All as appears from the official records of the City of Kattaw in my possession and under my control and witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand this blank day of blank 2020, Savannah McLeod, City Clerk, City of Kattaw, Kentucky.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Is there any discussion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 11 designating September 2020 as City Government Month in the City of Kattaw.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We need a roll call vote, please.
Kim?
Aye.
Skylar?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. The Resolution Number 11, Resolution Designating September 2020 as City Government Month is hereby adopted. Okay, our next item is Executive Session pursuant to KRS 61.810C, Discussion Regarding Proposed or Pending Litigation. We will go into closed session.
We need a... we need a motion, second and a vote to go into closed session here.
Okay. Is there a motion on this matter?
I make a motion to go into Executive Session.
Second.
And Sandy, when you style your motion, we...
Do I have to say all that other stuff?
If you would, just so we have that documented in the record.
Okay, that's all right. I make a motion to go into Executive Session in pursuit to the KRS 61.8810 (C), Discussion Regarding Proposed or Pending Litigation.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We need a roll call vote.
Kim?
Aye.
Skylar?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. We will go into Executive Session.
The way that, from a technology standpoint, I'm going to... what we'll do is we have a way of segregating the members of the council and everybody into a breakout room that will not be...
We've lost Tom.
In the clouds somewhere.
He's waiting for the 15 seconds to count down.
If there was a little better lighting, I could show you that a deer is sitting outside the door here.
Okay, so we back everybody back on, we back live?
Yeah, and I think you need a motion to come out of executive session.
Is there a motion that we come out of the executive session?
I make a motion to come out of executive session.
Okay, and second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Need a roll call vote?
Kim?
Aye.
Skylah?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Okay, so we back into regular session and call the meeting to order again. We're going back on to the agenda. The next thing is going to be?
No, there was no action.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, yes, I need to say that there was no action taken during the executive session. Call the meeting to order and go back to our regular agenda. The next thing is the mayor's report, I don't have much to report since I had a report on Monday night. The only thing I want to really say is that we've had two special meetings this week and I think that Savannah has worked in overdrive trying to get so much of this accomplished for us this week and I just want to give her, sing her praises for her. She's done a great job and our maintenance workers are just doing an excellent job. We're short-staffed and give them praise as well. And that's all I've got, do the council members have anything to report?
I don't, other than to reiterate exactly what you said. Everybody is pulling together and working very hard and that's appreciated.
I just want to say that we take them for granted and I want the sheriff's department and our FAR department to know that they're always behind the scenes and as I said, we just assume and take it for granted that they're there to support us and I want to thank them for that.
Yes, absolutely, I agree, yes, thank you.
I don't really have anything to report again, reiterate everything else and hope Mr. Parker has a speedy recovery.
He was in the office today, he looked good, stopping by for a visit. Okay, if no one else has anything, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Motion made and seconded, we need a roll call vote Savannah, please.
Kim?
Aye.
Skylah?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sandy? All right, everyone head to Kim's house for chicken.
Guys, have it so many.